So you give them a thumbs up. Ready? Westboro TV, you ready?
Okay, I saw the face. I think we're good. Okay, so for the record, we started the meeting in 6:02 with the Pledge of Allegiance and opening the meeting. It's now 6:08, and our delay is to make sure that Westboro TV is on and functional. So our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
Great, thank you very much. So I put my update in sort of slide form today, and I wanted to take just a second before I dive in to talk a little bit about the organization of the agenda. It's following the same pattern we've had before, where I have my update with some brief items. I am going to sort of talk about two more significant items in my update, feedback from the calendar survey, as well as potential budget reductions. Those are also included in the discussion for you all and in action items at the end. You know, I know in the past the committee has sometimes taken action out of order. We don't have anyone here waiting to go home tonight, so there's no reason to necessarily do that. So I would, you know, I think there's probably members of the public interested in weighing in on some of these things. So I just wanted to point that out for the viewing audience. And with that, I will dive in here. Where's my clicker? First of all, just a couple of quick updates. I want to give a big thank you to American Legion Post 163 for their ongoing support of the schools and the community in a bunch of important ways. First of all, they recently reached out to let us know they are going to be sponsoring participation in Boys State and Girls State for some representatives from our high school, which is a great opportunity for a couple of kids. And secondly, in partnership with the Sugar Shack, with Westboro Connects, and some of our elementary schools, they did this wonderful Valentine's Day delivery of Valentines and also some candy to veterans in the community. So thank you very much for the American Legion. I wanted to acknowledge briefly that we are facing an interesting thing happening in town. Our school buildings during the summer, you may know, get very heavily used, and we've got a bit of a space crunch going on. So if you hear anything about it, I just am telling you for the record, we are working actively with the town departments and school departments to try and see if we can figure out where to put everybody. The reason for the crunch is actually kind of a good one for us. We've got the final phase of a project at Hastings. So Hastings is going to be offline for the summer as that work happens. But because of that last sort of allotment of ARPFTs going toward the paving project at Armstrong and at Gibbons, those buildings, while the buildings themselves are not being worked on, that parking lot work makes use of the buildings very impractical in the summer times. It is loud, it is snowy, and it's hard to get close to the buildings. So we're working really hard to try and find a home for all the programming that usually happens. And I have to say, I want to give my compliments to everybody in the mix, both on the school side and the town side, for sort of being flexible and trying to think creatively. But we're continuing to work through that process. Finally, there's another update about the competency determination. The Board of Education actually just voted to amend the regulations related to competency determinations. So they've made some muddy waters much clearer, is I think how I would put it. They've sort of said, here are some of the things that we expect to see in that competency determination from district to district. And what the good news is for us is all of those things are already included in our graduation requirements. So there is a period of public comment for that, and we'll wait through that period. But if you are interested in that and want more information, I can send that out. And then finally, I have a field trip proposal to talk to you about. And this came to us, this is sort of a late-breaking one. At the high school, this comes from Anita Salucci, who's a high school librarian, and it has to do with the High School Poetry Power Team. There are nine students who compete in a statewide competition with other Massachusetts schools. Mass Poetry is currently the sponsoring organization. It's an event that the poetry club has participated in for many years prior to the pandemic through Mass Leap. After the pandemic, Mass Poetry became the sponsor. The event is called Right Here, Right Now: Speak Loud Spoken Word Festival. So it's like a poetry slam kind of festival thing. And the teen spoken word festival is about creating space for teens to let their voices be heard. In addition to our teen and individual slams, this year's festival offers a dynamic lineup of non-competitive events crafted to inspire, empower, and connect young voices from all backgrounds. The festival is going to feature workshops from a wide range of topics, including professional poets, open mics, and team competition. And there's also an Artist Resource Fair that'll be available and offers the chance for attendees to engage with community organizers and a large group of artists who've launched their creative journeys through poetry. The festival takes place at Emerson College, and accommodations are at the Marriott. Because of the early start time on Saturday and the late end time on Saturday, that's why they're asking for the overnight accommodations. So they're going to go in Friday evening, stay overnight, so they can be ready to go first thing in the morning. And this is a performance event. People have to get up and speak, you know, and kind of perform live. And then it's kind of running all the way till about 10 o'clock at night. So instead of driving back late at night, they'll house students and have them come back. Not every student is staying overnight, but it's an option for some students. And I think that's kind of the entirety of that. So we can, if you have questions, I might be able to answer some of them. But if, I'd appreciate a vote of support on this one, because it is coming up soon, March 14th. We can, and because Anita's not here, we can do that vote later, I think.
Will there be a discussion from the presenters at that time, or this is it?
This is it. This is it, yeah.
Good, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to move on to the other two, two big items sort of in my update for you. One is about the calendar. And to start us off, I thought I would recap prior discussion, just to sort of set the stage for where we are. Okay? First of all, you know, we started this conversation back January 8. I proposed an original calendar that really rolled over essentially this year's calendar to next year with very few modifications. That conversation on January, it's really focused on concern about the number of full weeks of school, and maybe the possibility of somehow extending the winter break to make it possible for families who travel overseas. So that was January 8. So went back, came up with a couple of different options that were shared on January 22. And those options sort of toyed around with moving some of the half-days around to create more full weeks, and then moving the full day to the Monday after February break in order to make another potential kind of easier travel block for families. They also added some days into the winter break. On February 5, we kind of introduced another version at the request of the committee that included longer breaks and federal holidays only. So we've got kind of four different options flying around. After discussion there, there was request for solicitation of feedback from the community. We did some outreach via Parent Square to both staff and to families. So kind of in summary, what we heard from families and staff was the following. Community respondents were an almost even split, with a slight skew toward the version 4, which is the version without the, without the single-day holidays. I do want to note that the response rate was low, 14.9% of the total people who are in Parent Square responded. On the staff side, we saw the overwhelming majority preferred version 4, with a response rate of close to 50%. So different response rates, for sure. There were many, many thoughtful comments on both sides of this, on all sides of it. And I read through all of them, and I have to say, I was kind of impressed with people's care and consideration for each other in this conversation. One clear and funny point of agreement, that my idea related to January 2 is a terrible idea, and everybody agrees that we should get rid of that on the calendar. So I am going to propose that we do in fact do that, and that we remove January 2, so it's part of the winter holiday. I wanted to kind of run down some of the themes that came up from the concerns. You know, very, very clearly, there was a lot of feedback that related to respect for celebration of diversity in, of the community, and that this is a real point of pride for many people in Westboro, that it is a diverse place, and that it's a home to many cultures and traditions, and that to see those reflected in the calendar was important. There was concern raised about inconsistency and adherence to the homework and test policy when those holidays aren't in place. There was some concern about process, that this felt like a kind of fast-moving thing without enough time to really engage the community fully. And, you know, with that response rate, I think that's a concern to take seriously. Some concerns raised about early June and childcare challenges that may come up with an earlier dismissal. The notion of a summer slide, which is the idea that when we have a longer summer break, there is learning loss, and we have to kind of recoup that the next year. And I think a bottom line is saying there's the wider political context concern. And I heard about this both through the written feedback, but also in person, that, you know, we are in a moment in our nation where there is a lot of political division and discord, and that movement that might further give people a sense of division and undermine a sense of belonging for people within the community would be a concerning move. Kind of the other side, some of the main concerns came from working parents, and related to the challenges of providing childcare, funding childcare, and paying for childcare on those single days that were there. Concern from staff was overwhelmingly about momentum and continuity of instruction, especially at the start of the year, but also with regard to AP classes and the kind of need to ramp back up after each day off. A concern was raised in a number of places about fairness. What about other holidays that aren't on the calendar yet? There's concern about, you know, the notion we have existing policies about students and staff taking the holidays that we need, maybe we just need to enforce those better. And then some people really wanted to get out earlier in June, spend more time with family or traveling. So those are the sort of main themes that I saw. And I, you know, shared all the comments with you. So if you think I missed anything, you'll have that opportunity to pitch in. But those are, those are the big buckets. I did run an AI version, and came pretty close to the same thing, too. So I guess I haven't sort of weighed in to tell you what I think, and I'm about to do that. I would say for your consideration, and kind of my recommendation, is to really be thinking about a few things very carefully. One is, I do think it's very, very important to think about the impact of eliminating holidays at this time, given the wider context. I really think that's critical. I've been so impressed by the kind of culture of this place, and the kindness of this place, and I wouldn't want to lose that sense of the place. The other part of this that I want to give a lot of credit to is educator voice. The educators have indicated they have real concerns about this calendar and its functionality. And so I don't think we can entirely ignore that. And I think, you know, the unfortunate part is our response rate is so low that there's no real community consensus. And I do want to say a couple of things that I think are contributing to that as well. One is that we used Parent Square to do this outreach, and that was very intentional. Parent Square is a tool that is designed to work in translation. So the hope was to get to more people that way, not fewer. But I think two things happened that got in the way. One is, people have been accessing Parent Square in different ways. Some of them have signed on, and some of them are just sort of watching things passively. And so it became kind of a technical challenge for people to actually submit their feedback. Secondly, on the back end, one of the things that it allowed us to do is to look at participation. Of the 424 contacts in Parent Square who list a language other than English as their first language, only seven participated in this. And that's concerning to me, because the whole reason for using this was to try and reach a cohort of people who we wouldn't be able to reach through a normal survey. That's 1.6% or something like that, 1.9%. So it's not a great representation, I think. And so that notion of who's missing from this data is worrisome. So, you know, from where I sit, I would make two recommendations for your consideration. This is your discussion and your vote later. But first of all, I would restore December 22nd and 23rd to be in school days, and add January 2 in as part of winter break. So those are changes to that version 2, okay? I would recommend that with those changes in place, that you vote version 2 as the calendar for next year, and that we then begin a discussion about what happens after next year, with a more thoughtful and in-depth exploration of what's going on with student learning. I think the educators have indicated that there was a concern, and I want to be really mindful of the fact that if folks are working day in and day out with children, we want to listen to what they have to say, and there may be ways we can address that and find some creative solutions that are somewhere other than what we've done already. So I put all that forward for your consideration and discussion. I know there are probably people here who want to add in as well during public speak, but, and you all, we could either do that part of the discussion now, or we could do it later. So I can pivot and go right to budget if, but I'll leave it to the chair. You can decide what you want.
Let's go to budget.
Got it. Okay. I'm going to take a drink of water. All right, for budget, I just wanted to provide, again, context of where we start, you know, where we landed, I guess, in terms of the budget process. The current FY26 approved budget is not an overblown budget by a long shot. It maintains level services, but it does include an overall reduction of 4.6 FTE. Either level funds reduces many of the materials and supplies accounts within the budget. It does account for contractual salary increases, including steps, lands, and COLA, and it also includes significant increases for transportation and special education. None of those things are things that are easily controlled costs. Those are things that we have to kind of figure out what to do about. So I want to be 100% clear that any reduction we make is going to be a reduction in services for children and families from this point out. Process-wise, I think it's really important to tell you a little bit about how we approach this. I am a big believer in this being a kind of team effort, and that is how it was approached within the district. The leadership team, including the district leadership, principals, department heads, directors from throughout the district, we all met as a group, and everyone knew they were kind of expected to bring things and ideas to the table. As a team, we talked about priorities and our values. We all examined potential cuts together as a group, provided each other feedback. And then based on that feedback, the district leadership team prioritized the reductions, and then communicated the back out to principals and department heads. Those folks have already spoken directly with staff who may potentially be impacted, so that those folks don't hear that for the first time tonight. And we've also started the process of outreach to the whole staff and the teachers' union. And I'll be, we sent out a message that was co-signed with the teachers' union president this morning, and I'll be kind of boots on the ground in the schools over the next week, just making sure that teachers have the opportunity and other educators have the opportunity to ask questions about the budget. When we talked about priorities, I wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the work of the team, because I think these are things that are sort of inherent values and that came forward from an experienced and thoughtful leadership team that works very hard. They talked about keeping kids at the center of our decision-making, about trying to find a way to hold on to the things that make Westboro special, and make, being a graduate of the Westboro Public Schools is a thing that's noteworthy. So it's not just about academics, it's about these other experiences as well. Programs and practices that support, you know, a sense of kindness and belonging, clubs, activities, sports, the fine arts. We felt it was important to prioritize inclusivity, including a co-teaching model, support for English language learners, and strong special education, to preserve as many of the programs and people as we can, to increase class size if necessary to preserve programs. That's sort of the trade-off. And that's often the trade-off when you have to make budget cuts on the school side. To look at data in terms of enrollment, to try and distribute the impact. So one nice metaphor someone used was the idea of shrinking the pie a little bit instead of cutting out a whole piece. And to the extent possible, to really share resources among schools and departments and with our municipal partners, if that could help us gain some efficiencies. Where we landed was actually a tiered approach to reductions. And we did this pretty intentionally. So the thinking was simply this, you know, we were asked, the kind of request from the town side boards was around cutting 1% overall from the entirety of the town and school budgets, $140 million, less the amount set aside for debt service and health insurance, or maybe just debt service. So our rough calculation, and there's a little bit of a range depending on how exactly you calculate it, would have the schools responsible for reducing about $875,000, or somewhere in that ballpark. And to be honest, in thinking about that, our understanding is there are still a few things at play that could change. We don't have the rates yet back for debt service. We do not have a definitive sense of what's happening with insurance. And because those things are in play, we wanted to present an option tonight, so that if we don't have to make the more extreme cuts, there's an opportunity to hold on to as much as we can. So I'm putting that forward tonight for your consideration, by putting forward a tiered approach. I'm kind of calling tier zero what we've already done, which is the existing budget, that reduces positions by 4.6%. And I've included, as you can see, the request amount, and the change from FY25 to FY26 is 5.77%. A first tier of cuts would increase the FTE reduction to 7.95. So we've added a few more positions into the cut. It would also include a $100,000 cut to our technology purchasing, and I'll talk more about the details of that, as well as $150,000 offset from the preschool, and I'll talk about that as well. The total reduction then is $48,000. There's an asterisk there, because it does rely on income, and that can, so it feels a little bit less solid than a straight-out cut. But that request would mean that the change from FY26, 25 to 26, drops to just under 5%, okay? If we needed to go all the way to tier 2, that brings the total number of positions cut to 11.95. And in addition to those other things I've already mentioned, includes a $17,000 cut to athletics. The total of that tier is 323, which brings our grand total up to 871. And the total sort of change from FY25 to FY26, just under 4.5%. In the first tier, here's what we have. You know, tier 1 cuts would reduce fine arts and wellness FTE at K-3 level. And that is because that's where the enrollment is reducing. You know, a reasonable person might ask, why didn't you do this already? And there is a good answer for that question. Having the flexibility of having more FTE for these positions makes us able to flex the schedule in ways that can be very important, particularly given the array of programming that we have at the, at the K-3 levels. These are staff that some of the staffers shared across schools. As we reduce their days of service, it makes us harder for us to figure out how to plug them in. Additionally, when we have them there, we're able to do interesting, creative things with them that are good for kids, more inclusive programming, for example. But this is a cut that is sort of on the table, given the circumstances that we're in. This tier also eliminates a classroom position at Mill Pond, which would be a 5th grade position next year. It increases the class size average. It puts the class size average right up around 21 from about 20. So it's just under 20, it would be just over 21. And, you know, that's, that doesn't sound terrible, which is good. But again, another piece of this that's a little bit of a hidden cost is at Mill Pond, teachers team teach. They sort of divide up curriculum and they work together. When we disrupt the team structures, it means that teachers then have to kind of relearn and recast what they're doing. And I have to say, as a former teacher, doing that every so often is great. Having to do it year over year is not great educationally. This tier would also eliminate grade 7 Mandarin at the Gibbons. And in order to keep grade 8 in place, we would have to compact the high school classes and have staff from the high school pick up the 8th grade class in order to make sure students who started a language didn't have to stop partway through. This would essentially impact at least our middle school program, potentially our high school program. You know, 7th grade is really the entry point for world language study. If we don't have kids starting at 7th grade, the likelihood of them starting in 9th grade drops. Some may do that, and we'd have to kind of see how that goes. This one pains me a little bit, I have to say, because I think for my money, if you think about languages that are probably going to be worth knowing in the next 10 years, Mandarin's definitely on the list. This cut would eliminate elective options in social studies in English at the high school. We do have electives that are important to kids but have lower enrollment, and that's where we would eliminate those particular classes and students who had opted for those would need to go to like a second or third choice. It eliminates our in-house electrician position. We've had this, and it's currently a vacant position. This is actually a place where we are trying to figure out, is this an area where we might be able to do some collaboration with the town, or figure out a different way to come at a position? We don't want to eliminate the entire position. We need to hold a little bit of money aside in case we need those contracted services. But I think by not rolling that position forward, it gives us an opportunity to kind of rethink how we're doing business. This tier delays the scheduled replacement of interactive whiteboards in about 30 classrooms. So this is replacement that's scheduled out over three years, and there's about 150 total that need to be replaced over the arc of that time. This would sort of stretch out the timeline for replacement to four or five years ultimately. And, you know, the downside of that is, there's more likelihood that people are going to have frustration with their technology in the classroom. And because of the rate of change of these devices, getting service for them can be harder as they get aged, aged out over time, too. And then the final piece here is to increase class size at the preschool by adding two to three more gen ed students per class. And basically, this is a revenue approach. So currently, we have room programmatically to do this. It hasn't been done in the past several years, primarily because of COVID recovery, and just generally a sense that this program has been, it's in its eighth year, I think. So it was a relatively new program for a while, and you need to get its feet under it, and then COVID happened. And post-COVID, especially with early childhood, and especially for kids who are trying to develop language skills after being around people who wore masks all the time, it seemed particularly important. particularly important to keep those class sizes as small as we could. But now, while we would always prefer to have lower ratios if we can, if there's a need, this is a way we can generate some revenue without making cuts. This one, I think, may appear to be a little bit risky, but for the past year or two, we have had a decent waitlist for this program. You know, we haven't opted yet to increase class sizes, and we believe it's, $150,000 is actually a fairly conservative estimate of what we could do for this without kind of disrupting the program model. I think I just said all the things on this page, so. In the event that we need to go to those tier two cuts, I want to talk through that. That means everything that I just talked about plus this next list, okay? The first thing on this list is actually to eliminate an addition from the original budget. If you remember the original budget, I added a .4 PE teacher, and the concern was about PE classes at the high school being too large. This would reverse that, and instead of, basically would move the pain point out of PE and into health. So we would sort of reassign staff so that it's not a safety issue anymore, but it would be a class size issue. So we'd see some extremely large classes of health at the high school as a result of this. The second item eliminates coaching and PD support for a co-teaching model in grades seven to 12. So currently, there's a .6 position that's allocated really to support that program. This is the sort of thing that's hard to understand if you're not in it, but I really need to tell you, part of what has made Westborough so successful when it comes to special education is a very heavy investment in a co-teaching model that's highly inclusive. So the more support we can muster for having kids in classes with peers with plenty of support, the less likely it is that we need to place kids out of district. And it's also, it helps us just make sure kids are learning alongside their peers in the least restrictive environment. That co-teaching does not sort of happen by magic. It's actually very hard to do well and at a high level. And the position here is involved in co-teaching, coaching, so going into classrooms, observing teachers, giving them feedback, giving them suggestions, helping them streamline what they're doing. So it's really a kind of optimization position. In addition, this person does professional development, particularly with new educators. So we have new people come into the district who may never have done this before, haven't had to share a classroom and work alongside one another before, and helps those new teachers learn the skills that they need to support students. It's a, it's an incredible position. The other thing I'd say about it is, one thing about teaching that you can count on is, as soon as you think you've got it figured out, it changes. Something in the environment changes, whether it's AI or, you know, cell phones or what have you. And so having another coach, another person who's out there supporting changes in instructional practice is, is great. The next item on the list is administrative support for high school athletics. In addition to an athletic director, we currently have assistant athletic directors. Those are stipend positions by season. This would eliminate those positions. What that means is, I think the most obvious impact people would see would be game days and game times. This just gives us more range and capacity to respond in the moment when something's going, going in a way that is unexpected, or to just be supportive, make sure there's good crowd control, make sure there's kind of good fan behavior, make sure the refs can find what they need to be, those kinds of things. So this is just shrinking our capacity to be responsive. Reducing curriculum coordination in K to eight science and social studies. Currently, we have a one-point-a-position for science and a one-point-a-position for social studies. This reduction would essentially make both of those jabs one person's job, so it's going to reduce that person's impact. And in terms of what that person does, it's a very, very long list. And I'm going to rattle a few things off if I miss anything, Daniel knows this work inside out and backward, but, you know, first and foremost, these are folks who help our elementary educators, K to six educators, who are not content specialists, they're kind of generalists, they teach all things to kids, and many of them have strong backgrounds in literacy, but not necessarily in social studies or science. So these are folks who help get, get our elementary educators, and there are over 100 in the district, the professional development they need, the resources they need. They push and do co-teaching alongside with them. They actually partner with local community organizations, like the Historical Society, to create kind of hands-on programs and learning opportunities. They run PD during the summer, they do curriculum writing, they work with the middle school teachers on the transition between sixth and seventh grade to make sure that goes smoothly. What else, I know I've got, oh, oh, they evaluate, they help evaluate, especially new teachers, giving them feedback and support. So it's an incredible, important resource, and to not have both positions means it's going to water down everything a little bit. The next item is in-class math support at Gibbons. So currently, we have three academic tutors at Gibbons. This would reduce that to two. Those academic tutors are used primarily in math, and they do a lot of push and support, so working alongside teachers to make sure kids can access the math curriculum. Many of the times, that's in classes where there may be a high percentage of kids who are, for example, English language learners, who may have great math skills and potential, but English is getting in the way, right? So things like that. Those positions will still exist, but they're just not going to get to as many kids and not as many sections. This proposal also reduces custodial staffing at the high school by .5. This is, we're sort of taking advantage of a retirement situation here. We have a mid-year retirement next year, and the plan would be to reallocate kind of responsibilities after that retirement, and then sort of see if that is a sustainable model. So we'd be kind of looking at that carefully. One of the things I always want to keep a close eye on with cuts on the buildings and ground side is that we don't want to cut a position and then end up just paying out the same amount of money in overtime. So we have to just really be careful about that. So we're going to kind of try that out and see if we can make it work, and then we'd be able to look at a reduced staff going forward after that, if it is workable. And then finally, you know, the district operates with a lot of people at the table who you never really see and hear about. So the teachers are the sort of front-facing part, but there are all those folks behind the scenes that really make everything work. We have data support, we have a team in the district office and one, and a data analyst who does all sorts of things, but primarily works with our student and staff data information and getting that ready for state reporting, which is mandated and also part of what gets us grant funding. But the person also helps out with onboarding new staff, making sure everybody's got their security badges, things like that. This reduction will impact, because that work has to go somewhere else, it's going to impact our ability to respond quickly to situations that come up when it comes to kind of needing to optimize what we're doing. And that's tier two. So that is my total kind of package for you. I think, you know, I really want to thank the team. I think people came together very thoughtfully and have tried to work very hard on behalf of students and families so that we approached this with as much care and consideration as we can. And we just want to be clear, the things that happen, they are, they are a loss, and it's my hope that we can have the loss be as minimal as possible, obviously, and that makes it easier for us to sort of recover down the road as well. So I think that is it for the superintendent's report for tonight.
Daniel, could you put the summary slide back up? The opportunity for people in the hall to speak to us in regards to what you've heard tonight is the next item on the agenda, which is citizens' request. When we finally get into the remaining action items of the school committee tonight, will be a discussion and, and eventually a vote on the two items that, that are here tonight, which is the calendar and the budget. Timing requires that, in fact, if we are going to reduce our budget that we've already voted in December, based on state law, whatever we vote as the school committee is the item that goes on the agenda, excuse me, on the warrant to be considered by the town meeting. Obviously, motions can be made to increase or decrease, but the, the item, whatever we do as a school committee, is the first number that the voters will see. And so it's very important that we meet the timing relative to the town meeting, which restricts us now to do this tonight. Our first budget was submitted to the town as required in a proper time relative to the town's charter. The process to get there started as soon as we started school this year. And so that budget exists in a binder, line item by line item, to come up with, is it on the screen? The summary sheet of the budget options, please.
I'm back in the slideshow, that one.
Yeah, that one there. And so this is the important point to speak from. Our budget, as you see there, was $70,864,779. And it is a level-funded budget, that is, excuse me, a level services budget. And in order to do that, based on increases in cost of things, including salaries, the budget went up by 5.77%. So these items that you see below that, tier one and tier two, are a request of the Finance Committee as well as the Board of Selectmen for the town to do its best to reduce the cost of everything, whether it be on the school committee side or whether it be on the town side. And I'm not sure how much of a discussion for the town's reduction has occurred in public, but it is in the works and would also be presented in due course at town meeting. So we'll leave this on the, on the screen for now, and at this point, move into citizens' requests. We'll invite anybody up who wants to speak to us. We'll start row by row and my left to right. So if you could read our rules.
Well, firstly, is there anyone here that wishes to make a statement tonight? Before you begin, we'll remind everyone of the school committee policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a current resident of Westborough. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It's an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. State your full name, please, and address, speak directly into the microphone.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this time to speak to you today. My name is Sarojah Honsoge, and I am a resident of Westborough. I came here to talk about the use of technology at the school, and it looks like I picked a very relevant topic because it is slated for some cuts in your budgetary considerations. I advocate cuts to technology, and I want to be very clear about my background. I have a degree in computer engineering, and that's a formal degree in engineering. It's electrical engineering with a computer engineering specialization. Did neural engineering when I was in New York, was recognized for my work in blockchain, so I'm very immersed in technology. But I have four children in the school district, and what I've seen about their use of technology at the school has led me to the conclusion that there is no cognitive value or benefit to the use of their technology. A key event happened today, speaking to my daughter this afternoon, she apparently used ChatGPT to try to edit a story that she was writing recreationally, not for school. I asked her, where did she get access to ChatGPT? Several times, she didn't want to share where she got that access, and finally, she revealed she got it through her school Chromebook. I thought that this was an issue because exposure to ChatGPT is a key safety issue. I'm also in cybersecurity, and I don't think that schools are equipped to fully understand the consequences of access to technology. I saw that the interactive whiteboard was one of the items on the cut list. I don't see any issue with cutting access to the interactive whiteboard. Frankly, I don't think anybody has evaluated how much cognitive benefit is available from using an interactive whiteboard. Frankly, my child can barely write by hand. Her math skills are poor, in my opinion, and this is all because of an overreliance on technology. I also saw that Mandarin is another item that may have an FTE cut. I say, cut even more from technology, reduce the number of iPads, reduce the number of Chromebooks, and for God's sake, let's start a discussion of how safe and how carefully we're monitoring its usage and truly understanding if there is any cognitive value. Scores across the nation are going down, children's myopia that is shortsightedness is increasing. The United States is not making itself known for intellectual prowess globally. And so here at Westborough, we have a real opportunity, if in fact, we have to think about budget cuts, to figure out and prioritize technology as an area of cuts, but additionally, an area of inquiry to determine what the cognitive benefit is. Instead of thinking about cutting FTE, cutting Mandarin, which has cognitive, my child is actually in Mandarin, I see no value in cutting access to a Mandarin teacher versus, you know, all the ancillary items that we have for technology. Final comment, I actually requested several of the schools that my children are in to withhold the devices that were assigned to them, that I didn't even want them coming home. And again, to reiterate, I'm very immersed in technology, you might even say, I've innovated quite a bit, but I think that at this level, the school really has to reflect on how it's being used, and I hope that I get another opportunity to speak in more detail about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come up.
So my name is Sophia Cogan. I'm Westborough resident, 26 Church Street. I have three kids in the school system, two at Armstrong and one at Gibbons. And so I want to speak about the technology issue from like a different perspective. I'm also a psychiatrist, and so what we know about like internet use and gaming is that they're extremely addictive. So in addition to like the content safety issue, so when my son was in fifth grade and the iPad started coming home with him, it was like a YouTube free-for-all. I'm, 95% of the time he was doing homework, he was YouTubing, and it just became this thing that I had to police, and the educational value was really questionable. So aside from the issue of the content, I'm really concerned about like the interference in the process of how our children's brains are developing. So we know that, like, there's a whole literature about internet and gaming addiction, and that it behaves in a very similar manner to addiction to, you know, drugs and alcohol and kind of other things that we all accept are addictive. And we know that from the drugs and alcohol perspective, earlier exposure to those substances increases the risk of development of a youth disorder. And, you know, I really think that we're starting to see that this early access, unfettered access to technology is going to have a similar effect. We're seeing decrease in like, decrease in frustration tolerance, decreased attention spans. And I do think that when we're thinking about the budget, like cutting math coaching, Mandarin, you know, I think we have to really think hard about like what value we're getting from the money that we're spending on technology. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Kumsey. I'm a resident of 34 Long Drive.
I'm a resident of 34 Long Drive, Westboro. I just needed one clarification on the 100K cut to technology. Is this something which is proposed only for this year? You said, you know, the whole process will be delayed in terms of getting upgrades done. So is this 100K cut only for this specific year or for years to come?
I think we're talking about budget reduction, which sort of reduces the floor. So if we were going to increase, we would have to then proactively increase the budget back up from that floor. So it is, you know, we're cutting the budget and going to have that, that, that's not a one-time, we're cutting the operating budget, so we're making a reduction that would be a reduction going forward unless we reverse it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I might add that the process of budgeting for the schools is different than the process of budgeting for the rest of the town, and that is, the bottom line is what you vote. How things are distributed from the bottom line is up to the school committee and the administration. This exercise in what would happen if we reduced the budget by any of these numbers is how did we get to those numbers, and that was the list that we created. But in any given month or week, in terms of going forward, once the number is voted by the town meeting, then it's up to the school committee and administration to use that money to benefit the students of the school. It isn't necessarily what might happen, but it is a method by which we could show what you don't get by reducing the budget by these amount of money. So if we have no one else for citizens' requests, we'll move on to school committee reports. Jacob?
Nothing to report.
Steve?
This isn't so much a report as it's an expression of gratitude. If I'm not mistaken, this is my last school committee meeting. I've decided not to run for reelection. So I first want to thank all the voters who supported me and allowed me to be here and to serve the town. It's been a real honor. I've greatly enjoyed being able to see civic life, civic participation from this side and to really come to appreciate just how much work goes into what members of the school committee and especially the leadership team in town within the district do. They have the priorities of the students first and foremost in their minds, and I hope that in the coming election, that that sensibility will guide the voters, that Westboro has continued to be a town with an incredibly strong school district, and I hope that the person who fills the role that I have filled also sees that, sees a similar need to commit themselves to student-centered learning and to improving even more what is available to the families and residents here in Westboro. So I'd just like to thank everyone. Thank you very much.
And I think on that note, I'd like to applaud you for your performance. Sarah?
So nothing to report, but I just want to say thank you to Steve. It's been wonderful sitting here with you. You have always imparted a great amount of knowledge to the rest of us, especially from your educational background and what you do on a day-to-day basis, so thank you and good luck.
And I also have nothing to report, but I'll just echo that. Thank you, Steve, for your service. It's been really great working with you over the last year and getting to know you. I look forward to staying in touch, and you will be missed on the Essex Bank, so. Thank you.
Very good.
Yes, I have a few updates from the schools and some upcoming events. So Armstrong has Family Fun Day this Saturday from 11 to 3:00. At Fayles, they have Hedgehog Book Week, and on March 6th, there's going to be a special author visiting the school, and we'll talk to the students about being an author and illustrator. And then on March 7th, they're going to have a family movie night. For Hastings, they will also have an author visit on the 6th. And then Girls on the Run, it's a girl empowerment organization that is running a 5K in the spring at Polar Park. So registration is open for third to fifth graders, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis, and the season will start the week of March 3rd. And then Hastings is collecting scents for seeds as they have a school garden. So from February 24th to March 14th, they will collect spare change to buy seeds and materials to start growing in their classrooms. Mill Pond, they raised over $1,200 in support for the damages caused by the wildfires in California. And then Gibbons, their theater program is doing a play, which is upcoming and is going to be February 28th and March 1st and 2nd. And then lastly, at the high school, our winter sports playoffs have begun and seasons are coming to an end, and our spring sports information meeting is going to be tomorrow after school. Grade 9s, 10, and 11 had assemblies to discuss course selection for next year, so the portal is going to be opening soon. And then lastly, our high school musical is going to be in March on the 14th and 15th, and tickets are going to be sold in the upcoming weeks.
Very good. My turn. I have nothing, I guess, to add tonight, other than the fact that it's been kind of a very interesting period for the school committee during this discussion of budget reductions, because we've never presented what you lose if the money isn't there. Historically, that the budget offered by the school committee has been a level-service budget, and almost always, it has been voted by the town for that purpose. Clearly, you know, the consequences, I think, of COVID and other changes about us, inflation and, you know, change in administration in Washington, the probable loss of funds from Washington, et cetera, will probably create chaos for a while, and hopefully, we'll come out of it a little better than when we went into it. So with that said, I think we can move on to action items tonight. The first item here is the removal of Article 8, which is the Special Education Reserve account, and it was suggested by Allison to the committee, and the committee voted in favor of it, I don't know, a month ago or two months ago, maybe. Perhaps you could discuss the rationale behind this?
I think when we first proposed it, I think we were optimistic at that, we were bright-eyed and optimistic early in the budget process that there would not only be some support for it, but also some funding to go along with it, to establish it as an account. And, you know, again, as I've talked about before, I think it's a good mechanism that can ensure better budgeting in the long run. I would suggest that we withdraw it from consideration right now because I think the timing is wrong. I think it's a good idea at a bad time. I think, right now, the focus really does need to be on the kind of core budget proposal and doing everything we can to kind of do the best we can by the students within the operating budget. And I certainly intend, if we can kind of make it through this next bit, to revisit this at a future date. I think it could potentially be a good item to bring to a special town meeting in the fall or maybe to a subsequent year. But for my money, I don't think there's money to fund it right now, and I don't know that it's worth trying to kind of go to the effort to get it through at town meeting when we've got other fish to fry. So that's my two cents on that.
So actually, our motion, I believe, needs to be to ratify action that was required by Allison with the town in order to have it pulled from the town warrant, and therefore, it's already done, but our action would be to ratify her action to do that. So that would be my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just one request, I guess. I know part of your budget presentation at the town meeting will include the things you did not budget for.
Yes.
And I think you should mention this as well, as something that, because I don't know how many people actually watch our meetings, but I know more people will be at the room on the town meeting, and I think it would be good for them to see that we've done a lot to reduce the burden.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion?
So I'm disappointed, but I, you know, I understand the superintendent's reasoning that now is not the best time to do this, and I think that when it is put forward, we want to do it at the best time possible. This is an important step. This is something that I wholeheartedly endorse, and I believe the superintendent when she says that this is something that she'll want to bring forward again in the future. Certainly, if it's not brought forward, I will be right there at that desk, speaking as a citizen, but, you know, I have faith that she will stand by her word.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, our action now comes on the vote to ratify Allison's action in removing Article 8 as proposed for the town warrant this year. All those in favor? Aye. 5-0-0? Thank you. The next one is to rescind our vote for the $30,000 article reimbursement that I had suggested and the committee voted last meeting, two meetings ago. Reason why is because the article currently there, which deals with the chillers at Mill Pond, is for $70,000, but it also would be funded out of free cash. So the nature of what I had suggested, I wasn't aware that the free cash would be used for the 70,000 article. The importance of that is that if the town meeting votes it, we can start that work right away. And that was the intent of my article for 30,000. So it's unnecessary, is the bottom line. So with that, I would move that we rescind our vote on the proposed $30,000 reimbursement article, and it wasn't posted in the warrant, so that's sufficient. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next item is the approval of the high school overnight trip to Boston. You did explain it quite well. Maybe just summarize again?
Yeah, sure. So again, it's a trip in March. A group of nine students are attending a kind of poetry workshop event in Boston at Emerson College. Because of the early start on a Saturday and late end on a Saturday, the trip includes an option for students to stay overnight on Friday night and Saturday night and not be, you know, driving late at night, which I think is a safety consideration. So the librarian at the high school, Nina Salucci, is running this trip, and it's a trip she's run in the past successfully.
Is there a motion?
I would like to move to approve the overnight trip at Emerson College.
A second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. 5-0-0? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will give you the signed approval.
Perfect.
Next item is the approval of the school calendar. So I think to get discussion started, I would make a motion that we approve School Calendar Number Two, as suggested to be amended by Allison's comments earlier, which was moving one of those days to after New Year's. And reason behind my motion is that, for years and years and years, we have been trying, as a school committee, to accommodate all the cultures in the town as best we could. We do have a dead stop based on state law, and state law says that school has to end on June 20th. And so as, over time, that we've added various holidays for various cultures in the school calendar, to the extent that we had wished to add any more, we would run up against the June 20th date to end school. But up to this point in time, we've generally been able to honor those promises for the various holidays for everyone to, and I do believe that culturally, it's a good idea to have those so that they can be celebrated in school, so that every student can understand, in effect, what happens for everybody else. And so there were other discussions that came up as we did this evaluation. As you probably guessed, we had four different calendars to look at, and the one, the calendar number four, created what would be legally the minimum that we would have to do for holidays during the school year. And my intent, anyway, in asking for the comments on all these calendars was to see generally what the town is thinking. But still, there's no reason not to continue what we were doing in regards to honoring the cultural heritage of this town as we have. There may be a time that might come forward where we would be up against that end date, and there are other things that came up in our discussion that I believe one of us here will speak to as we go forward in the discussion. So I've made the motion for Calendar Number Two with the amendments that Allison suggested tonight. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Now, time for discussion.
Okay.
Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Thank you.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time since the last meeting, I'm sure Sarah did too, thinking about this, about this vote and this conversation. I had a lot of conversations. So I didn't want to miss all the points I had, so I put together a speech. I'll try to read it as fast as I can, because I feel like I have to explain myself, where I'm coming from, because I was, I guess, the driving force to propose a different calendar. So let me start by saying that two years ago, when I started my term on this board, I did not want to make any changes to the calendar. That was not on my agenda in any way, and I did not want to switch to the federal holidays at that point. This is something that came later. I grew to this realization during our discussions last year, when, back then, without forming a subcommittee based on a survey with mixed reviews, last year, just for recollection, last year, 54% of the population that voted supported adding two new holidays, and only 28% of the staff supported that change as well. Majority of staff, overwhelming majority of the staff, were in opposition to adding new holidays. Our committee voted for one, and we moved two holidays from category two to category one, which increased the fragmentation that teachers, majority of teachers complained about, that it's an issue and that, and we just made that problem worse. I'll add here, we added two holidays, Eid and Lunar New Year. I hear that last year, in the whole discussion about the calendar, I was not approached by a single person, I did not witness a single person advocating for the Lunar New Year. That was just bundled, but nobody advocated for that, in my presence at least. What complicated things more was that, as a result of these changes, we reduced Good Friday from a full day to a half day. And some people were quite hurt by this decision. We heard some of them here at this board, and the staff felt like their voice was ignored. They were very vocal about not adding more holidays. They were asking for more continuity in instruction, and they felt ignored, and I think that was not right. And this is when I realized that we can't just arbitrarily add or remove holidays from the calendar, we have to, we have, because we actually, in this process, what we did last year, I believe, we actually created a more divisive environment that creates more harm than good. And this is when I realized the only solution to this is to adopt a calendar that has all the federal holidays. And in fact, multiple towns are going this way forward as well. So we have Grafton, Shrewsbury, Marlboro, I checked just several, I didn't do a full search on all of them. Our current calendar creates challenges for both educators and families, and it is no surprise that both of these groups voted in favor of adopting the calendar that I was suggesting. I did not realize only 15% of the community voted. That's really disappointing. I was hoping that we would get better, you know, I want to make this decision as informed as possible, so I'm disappointed by that. But the teachers' voices even stronger than last year. 81% of the teachers are in favor of adopting the federal holidays. I'm not an educator, and I rely on the voice of the staff. Like Allison mentioned in her initial speech, they are on the ground, and they see the impact that this fragmented calendar has. So all the way until New Year's Eve, we'll have six weeks of full instruction, and teachers are asking for more continuity in the fall especially. The federal holidays version would have eight, adds two more weeks, and maybe you could be, maybe we could do even better if we play with the PD days in some ways. I picked a few quotes from the teachers, which I think, I think their voice was not heard last time, and I think as a board, we should do better and pay attention to what they're saying. And the motivation that they are coming from, here's one. "The constant holidays interruption in teaching has made it very difficult to gain any momentum in the classroom. Our students thrive in consistency and structure. Our students' education is too choppy this year, and we are really seeing and feeling it in the classroom." Another one. "I highly appreciate the inclusiveness that Westboro community shows by observing multicultural holidays. While I initially supported this idea, I do feel that in practice, this year's schedule made it very challenging for students to develop a sense of routine. I observed the impact it had on school attendance and motion regulation and overall well-being." And one more. "While I appreciate the consideration to being inclusive for the diverse cultures in Westboro, the many disruptions have greatly impacted cohesive teaching and productive time on learning." These are words coming from our teachers that are working with the kids, and there's a lot more in a similar fashion. I looked at the community feedback as well, and this is based on conversations I had also in addition to what the parents left. Their voice concerned about the practical consequences of the various one-day holidays and the half-days in addition to that. Many, if not majority, of workplaces in U.S. allow, follow a federal holiday schedule, not religious or cultural holidays. When schools close for additional holidays that do not align with parents' work schedules, families are forced to find childcare arrangements, creating stress and financial burdens. And I've been there myself. We have three kids, and I know it was always difficult when we had to have, find childcare ad hoc. Teachers and staff, many of whom have families of their own, are also impacted by those scattered school closures. A stable, uninterrupted schedule allows them to plan effectively, provide better instruction, and maintain consistency for students." Here's one quote from one of the parents. "As a working parent in a corporate America, version 4 takes a huge burden off of us having to find childcare or take vacation time for the holidays that we do not get off. I also believe that for those that argue kids learn more about the holidays by being off from school, I don't agree with that at all, and believe my children would learn more about these holidays by being in school and learning about them from teachers and others that do celebrate them." I got into discussion on social media about this. Somebody made a post about the vote, and I learned a lot from that, and I read the reviews from people who support the current version as well. And the common feedback from the people supporting the current calendar is that our town should support and recognize diversity. Our district is home to families of many faiths, and it is absolutely vital that we honor and acknowledge their beliefs. These are my words. The concern for inclusivity is valid and deeply important, and I recognize that, but true inclusivity does not mean closing schools for some holidays and not others. It means creating an environment where students feel respected, acknowledged, and accommodated. If we close for certain religious and cultural holidays, how do we determine which ones are included and which ones are left out? Who decides which traditions are significant enough to warrant school closures? What message does it send to students and families whose holidays are not recognized in the same way? And we heard from other community, other religious minorities, asking for their holidays. Our district already has policies in place to excuse students for religious observances without penalty. Instead of closing schools, we can educate students about different cultural and religious traditions, integrating lessons about major global holidays into our curriculum." A quote from a teacher, feedback. "Picking certain religious holidays to take off from school is very divisive and goes against everything that Westboro stands for. It pits different people against each other, especially our students. It is not for us to decide which religious holidays should be taken in our community. This is not the model we want to be showing our children." I inquired with our administration about the topics already being taught in our schools regarding the religious holidays traditions. In kindergarten, students engage in a unit about shared traditions. Students compare and contrast various traditions and holidays. This year, they added Eid. In many classrooms, students choose a family tradition and/or holiday to share with their peers. Later, they identify a civic holiday and explain why it is important to American history. In first grade, students investigate national holidays, including July 4th and Juneteenth, as a part of the unity and diversity in the United States. In third grade, at least at Armstrong, the team does an inquiry into different holidays and produces a Q&amp;A book. If you are at Armstrong, the students' work is currently hanging in the third-grade hall and has a huge variety of holidays represented. In sixth grade, students participate in the World of Religion Symposium and hear from religious leaders representing a variety of faiths: Judaism, Islam, Hinduism, Sikhism, Catholicism, Lutheranism, Universalist, Unitarianism, and so on. These presentations include the major holidays for these religions. Some teams then celebrate Holi as a follow-up and to welcome spring. Across the grades, teachers read picture books and assign articles about holidays throughout the year. For instance, in second grade at Fale, students read the Scholastic article about the Lunar New Year, learned which animal their birth year is represented by, and did activities related to the holiday. Unit 2 in the Grade 9 World History Curriculum focuses on some of the world's most major belief systems: Hinduism, Buddhism, Confucianism, Judaism, Christianity, Islam. Students in groups conduct research on the basic tenets of the above belief systems, share their research in presentations or discussions, and then build historical theories about the function belief systems have served in society and history. And they spend approximately three weeks on this unit. When it comes to the federal calendar, at its core, I want to say that, at its core, our mission as a school district is education. Our school calendar should be a reflection of our commitment to students, families, and educators. A federal holiday-based schedule ensures stability, fairness, and consistency while still respecting the diverse traditions of our community through excused absences and cultural education. We do not need to close schools to be inclusive. We will never include all holidays either. And we just heard from Steve that we have a hard deadline from the state, so we will probably max out this number anyway. Every decision we make about the calendar should prioritize maximizing instructional time, improving student achievement, and preparing our children for success. A calendar based on federal holidays achieves this goal by ensuring fewer interruptions and a smoother academic experience for students and teachers. It offers a more practical, fair, and effective approach, one that best serves students, families, and staff. It ensures neutrality and fairness, treating all students and families in the same way rather than picking and choosing which holidays deserve school closures. This approach allows us to celebrate diversity in a meaningful way while keeping our schools open and operational for all. Now, I want to say, what I have said so far is my main motivation, but there are other benefits you might look at, or perks, but if you switch to that, a lot of feedback talked about that, but I want to emphasize, this is not my main motivation why I am supporting the calendar, although it is worth pointing that out. If we switch to the federal calendar, there are other benefits, like access to early summer education programs. Version 2 currently backs into the Shrewsbury Institute's schedule that many teachers take the last week in June. So some of them may not be able to attend that, and some of them work, some of them attend this, and that has been voiced by several teachers. Here is a quote from a teacher. "I work at a summer camp, and their first week that they require their staff to be there is the last full week of June. Being in school until potentially the 26th would mean I would miss the first week of employment for my summer job." It reduces the risk of extending the school into the fourth week of June, and I think there is wide consensus that this is a good thing. We can avoid the hot summer days. We give seniors more time before they go to college. It gives students and staff a longer break before the summer school begins. Right now, it's really close together. It gives extra time for the custodial staff to clean the buildings before the summer program begins. Also, I realize by having additional week of vacation, we give more time to our building staff for the building projects. Last year, with the Hastings project, I know the extra week would be very helpful. And potentially, there are savings in not running the buildings at full-time for one more week. Having said all that, and having read the feedback in the survey, I do recognize the current proposed calendar of version 4 is not ideal, and has room for improvement as well. Perhaps the half-days can be scheduled differently, or the December vacation can be differently structured, I mean, I guess that's done in version 5. To further increase continuity, I recognize that for some families, this move may feel rushed or poorly timed with respect to the actions of the current federal administration. I heard that feedback, and I recognize that. I want to assure you here that it is only coincidental, and as I explained earlier, I had asked for consideration of federal calendar a year ago already. I also hear the concerns about the issues with practical enforcement of Category 2 holidays when it comes to excusing absence and not assigning homeworks or instructing new material on such days. And there's definitely room for improvement here, and I think work needs to be done so that these issues are addressed and the community members feel assured that our district truly enforces these policies. I'm almost done. I do not want our committee to repeat the mistake from last year and jump to a vote without a deeper community outreach. This is what I have realized in the past three weeks. I am willing to accept version 2, now 5, for the '25, '26 academic year on the condition that we form a subcommittee to create a new calendar for '26, '27, and beyond, addressing the concerns coming from the community and staff, especially from those that were not in favor of adopting the federal calendar, which I think is still the best option. This subcommittee will necessarily include staff and community representatives and focus on adjusting the current policies or creating new ones so that all students and staff members are treated equally and with fairness. We cannot just accept version 2, 5, and move on. 81% of staff and majority of the community that voted does not support this. They voted in favor of switching to a new model. This would be neither democratic nor inclusive, and it would not reflect our community's values. Thank you.
I guess for the record, Schedule 5 is what we amended, the amended Schedule 2 that we discussed earlier. So just to make that clear. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah. So I didn't prepare a speech, but I'm going to try and keep it short. I just want to sort of rebut a lot of what I heard. I can't disagree more about the loss of education, giving a day off for a holiday. I think that it comes with immense education for children. I think that the world that we are going to be working in, I said this before, that our children are going off into more and more requires of them the ability to communicate and understand where others are coming from. So I personally feel that that is a very important piece of this. I also feel, I think there were some things that were said that I'm not sure that I agree with. I'm told that 80% of the staff feel this way. I believe earlier Allison said 50% of the staff had responded, or over 50%, so that 80% is of the 50%. Just want to make sure that we understand that. We also have seen, if people had watched the last meeting, we talked about this. I had said, you know, let's talk about a subcommittee, and at that time, you know, there was real confidence that a survey was going to bring back results, and we know that surveys can be flawed in their outreach. It's a very known fact. It's, I mean, in our community, part of this whole thing is that we have so many minorities in our community, and the challenges that they face in trying to access surveys and things of that nature. So we're missing a huge portion of that population, which we probably, potentially through a subcommittee, would still not be able to hear the voices of. I appreciate very much the teachers' feedback about continuity. On the other hand, I, it makes me wonder, you know, we're talking about five days, essentially is what we're talking about here. And of those five days, those are lunar holidays that we're talking about that may fall on a Saturday or Sunday. So the, you know, the passion around this, to take these away, is something that is lost on me. I don't, I cannot relate, I cannot understand. You know, if we were, we have half-days and PD days, those are single days that we have, but I'm just hearing this constant, you know, push for the removal of the holidays, and I think it's just a much bigger issue than what it's being shown to be about, is how I feel about it. I also want to talk about last year. So last year, we did do a survey, so that was the same process, same thing we did this year, actually. And so it wasn't that holidays were just arbitrarily added or that they were done without any feedback. The feedback was obtained, the committee voted, everybody had an opportunity to vote based on whatever feedback was received. Ultimately, you know, the committee is here to take in the information that the community gives us. Is that going to be taken in just through the form of a survey? Not necessarily. We all are able to talk to people and get information from different sources, and we try our best to synthesize that information and make the best decisions we can. In a situation like this, I look at it as a cost-benefit analysis, and I don't think that the cost of five days, of which many calendar years, all five will not fall during school days, that this is, that this is such a big deal as it is being made to be. Not to mention with the amount of rights that are being taken away from minorities in today's political climate and what's happening in the country. I think that this is sending such a negative message that this is the conversation that we're focusing on. I mean, that is my personal belief with respect to that. I think that this is not only the wrong time, but I have a difficult time wrapping my brain around why this is so important, in spite of all the feedback that I've heard from the teachers, because while I understand continuity has been, has been the big piece of this, that we want continuity, and I understand the importance of that. However, I'm not sure that this is as big of an interruption, considering the value that it brings. I also think that the, I'm not sure that there's that much benefit to getting out that much earlier in the summer. I know, you know, there may be folks that want to get out. I don't think that five days of an extension is going to make it or break it for people. I think that it's, if it's an issue to find childcare during the year, it's an issue to find childcare during the summer as well for people. So the longer they can stay in school, I'm sure some families, that would benefit the families as well. I would say during the school year as well, I had something, and I lost it because I'm just sort of trying to gather my thoughts here. But as far as the question of hitting the end of the school year, I believe it's the 30th, Steve, not the 20th, so...
There is a date, though.
There is a date. He's right. And we never want to fall close to that. I don't think that's ever going to happen. I think I've mentioned it before, that unfortunately, due to whatever the climate changes that are happening, we've had less snow days that have occurred of late than we used to have, and so I think that that plays in our favor. So I think that that's going to be one piece of it. I also don't, I am also really concerned about the homework policy and whether or not it's being properly instituted and followed by many of the teachers. that this is as big of an interruption, considering the value that it brings. I also think that the, I'm not sure that there's that much benefit to getting out that much earlier in the summer. I know, you know, there may be folks that want to get out. I don't think that five days of an extension is going to make it or break it for people. I think that it's, if it's an issue to find childcare during the year, it's an issue to find childcare during the summer as well for people. So the longer they can stay in school, I'm sure some families, that would benefit the families as well. I would say during the school year as well, I had something, and I lost it because I'm just sort of trying to gather my thoughts here. But as far as the question of hitting the end of the school year, I believe it's the 30th, Steve, not the 20th. So
There is a date, though.
There is a date. He's right. And we never want to fall close to that. I don't think that's ever going to happen. I think I've mentioned it before, that unfortunately, due to whatever the climate changes that are happening, we've had less snow days that have occurred of late than we used to have. And so I think that that plays in our favor. So I think that that's going to be one piece of it. I also don't, I am also really concerned about the homework policy and whether or not it's being properly instituted and followed by many of the teachers. So, you know, you have to speak to parents who have been through that, or students who have been through that, when there's a policy in place and it's not properly enforced, not through, you know, the failures of people, but just because it's challenging. It's challenging also for teachers to enforce that policy as well, because that's a breakdown of what they're trying to do. And you're teaching some of the kids and not others. And so I think that that's a challenge in and of itself. Maybe that needs improvement. I would say, I would rather work towards improvement in those policies first and in the enforcement before we start to take away these other things. If children have the opportunity to feel appreciated and welcomed and included in school, then maybe there will be no need for this at some point. So, you know, I have many other reasons that I can go on and on and on, but these were the most important pieces. I think that it's extremely valuable to have these holidays in place, and I really hope that the community understands, you know, the reason behind my decision.
Tim?
Sure.
I'll just start by thanking everyone that did take the time to fill out the survey. I think that everybody here can agree how important it is that we do get feedback from the community. And so it's always great to be able to read the responses and see how thoughtful people were. I'll keep my remarks a little bit shorter. I really just want to say that while I do understand the rationale and some of the logic behind version four of the calendar, at this time, I do not believe the calendars are different enough to be worth walking away from the values that calendar two represents, as long as the message that it would send to some families. One thing that I do want to note is that I'm reviewing all the comments, something that I did see a lot in the, those responding in favor of version four, that there was a lot of concern around daycare and childcare and how being able to access that. I was encouraged in a brief conversation with Allison that there is, the community ed, community education is available for parents, whether or not the students are enrolled in that full-time on the holidays, but certainly understand that that is not the end-all-be-all solution, and happy to continue the conversation around potential accessibility. But that's all for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I too would like to thank all those who took the time to fill out the survey and provide informal feedback as well. I've heard from a lot of community members. I too will keep my remarks short because Tim and Sarah have already expressed a lot of the same points that I would, I do want to just push back on one notion that Yakub brought up about version four not being divisive and being more inclusive. If you look at the days that are given off in that calendar, it absolutely privileges the Christmas holiday. And so it's, so it's not being inclusive. It's actually being divisive, because it is privileging a certain community over others while also granting the federal holidays. So I think, given the climate, given the values of the town, given the work that a previous subcommittee put into this, the hours of labor they put into this question, I'm in support of the amended version two, or what now has become version five, because, as Sarah mentioned, if we think of a cost-benefit analysis, I think the benefit of embracing cultural diversity and inclusivity is itself an instructional moment for students. And to not do that, I think is, I think it's having the town walk away from the sorts of values that we want to uphold. So I, I mean, for those reasons, I will be in support of version five.
May I add some more? Are you closing your remarks?
I think everybody's had their chance to make the points, and I guess what I would say, perhaps to conclude the discussion here, is that there are a lot of flaws, if you will, in what we have today that need to be reviewed and fixed, so that in fact, everything that exists in our process is made to work the way it was supposed to. Because right now, I don't, I don't believe it does, particularly for students who aren't in school because they're taking their religious holiday. And we have rules relative to attendance. We have rules relative to tests and homework, et cetera. And I think across the board, we all know that that is flawed and it's not working the way it's supposed to. So I think we should try to do our best to fix that. The next thing I would say is that clearly, this is a very important discussion for the community. And I think before, we would entertain something much different than a committee to study the point in terms of whether we change anything or not, that is all-inclusive of the town as well as the teachers. So that in fact, going forward, we don't have to do this as a committee. This is tough. It's tough to come to a conclusion on a single point when there's so many different points of view. I made my statement as to what I thought was fair, and I think from that point of view, the community benefits from these discussions that we have here to fix things that are broken, to do better than what we did before, and to honor our role here as representing the parents, students, and the community as part of the school committee in the town. So I think with that, it's probably time for a vote, unless there's an amendment to anything.
Can I make an amendment to the motion that we create a subcommittee in addition to adopting the version five and spend more diligent time on revising the calendar for the next year?
I would, I would like to defer that to the superintendent of schools as part of the process by which the curriculum calendar is accepted to go forward. And I guess I would leave that on the table for further discussion.
Yeah, I'm not in support of the amendment. I, you know, I don't have the rules of order here with me, but I think it might be an amendment that falls outside the scope of the original question. And so, so though, in theory, the idea of a subcommittee is, I mean, it won't be my place to be involved in that, I don't think right now it falls within the scope of what we are voting on.
I would also not support that amendment, because I think there was a subcommittee. I think there's lots of data that we can look at before we think about starting another subcommittee about this, in terms of whether there's a need for it. Again, I talk about substantive changes. We, between last year's calendar and this year's calendar, there have been no substantive changes. We did reach out for feedback last year. We've again, with no substantive changes, reached out for feedback this year. So in terms of, you know, efficiency, I'm not sure that that is, you know, barring where we have, I think, a situation where we have more and more groups coming asking for holidays that we cannot accommodate, I don't understand why this shift would need to be made. So for that reason, I would not support the amendment.
Tim?
I guess in regards to the amendment, I would want to know, just confirm when the last subcommittee was regarding the calendar?
It was...
I think it was three years ago.
Three years ago, and has there been any cases?
No, no, no. Let me clarify. I don't have it off the top of my head, but we're talking around
I think eighteen.
Eight years, or?
I think 2018.
You think it was 2018?
Well, it was in place for at least three years.
Six months, right?
No, it's, it's
It was a long period of time.
Yeah, you were 2018. I have that report in front of me.
2018, okay. So
And do we know when the last subcommittee was before that, before 2018?
There wasn't one.
No?
I think things got more complicated as the, as the town grew, for its own economic reasons, and everybody, anybody that looked to this town moved in. So, you know, we're in effect, with this calendar, trying to accommodate our society as existing in town now. And to say that things won't change in the future, and we need to do it again. But I think when we would do it again would be, should have significant forewarning so that such a committee could be panelled and the work be done.
I'll just, if I may, I would like to point out one thing. Our, the addition we made last year was done without the subcommittee, and the report from 2018 did not support moving those two holidays into category one. So I don't understand at this point, what is our board's policy for why, what is the criteria for why certain holidays are observed and others are not? If we can define this in a clear-cut fashion, supported by data or any other means, I think this would send a much better message to the community about why we made this selection.
So do we have data that says that we have many people seeking holidays that we have not been able to accommodate?
Yes. We had, in the feedback from the, from the calendar to the survey that was down this year, for instance.
So we have a lot of feedback on that? Or was any, did anyone approach the superintendent? I'm just, I'm just saying, we're making factual statements here about the fact that we, you know, added, the process we're undertaking right now is essentially the same process we undertook last year. Last year, we added the holidays. This year, we're trying to go to a federal, the whole purpose of this survey was to try and get feedback on going to a federal calendar. So I'm not sure why that process was undertaken this year, if that, if you were to believe that that's not the process. So I'm just trying to understand.
So what I said in the end of my, of my long speech is that I recognize what we did last year was not the right process, and I suggested creating a subcommittee, because I did not, I did not want to just accept the change and move on. That's why I realized that making any change in the calendar of that nature requires a community outreach and not just a survey. That was my request. And as I said, last year, I was not approached by a single person, and I did not see a single person in this room to ask for the lunar holiday. So, and I'm not the only person that's confused about the policy that we apply to decide which holidays are observed.
Well, I guess the answer to that is what does the school committee wish to do? At this point, we have an amendment on the table.
I would like to vote that.
Yeah, well, we have to. And so at this point, the amendment has been moved. Is there a second of the amendment? All those in favor of, or is there anyone here who wishes to second the amendment? Seeing none, I think we now vote on the main discussion, which is my original motion and seconded, to accept what is now calendar five, that is calendar four with those two changes. All those in favor? Opposed? Four, one, zero. So calendar, in the parlance of what people have out there, to see is calendar two as amended. So with that, we can move on, and that is to discuss the budget and any amendment there, too. Who would like to start? Could you put the summary table on the screen again?
Yeah.
Daniel?
I just have a few questions about, so the first one is about the projectors. Which schools are now going to get them?
Good question. I have that. Let me look here. Just a second. All right. Most of the impact would be at Mill Pond and the high school. That's where the largest number of older projectors are. It's not the projectors, it's actually the interactive whiteboard part of it.
Okay. Thank you. And I already asked through email, but I think it'd be good for the, for the community to hear about the tax burden reduction for each of the tiers for an average household in the town.
Sure. So when we looked at the tiers, the reduction to the average single-family tax burden at tier one, we calculated, and this is sort of our own internal calculations, understanding that, you know, we're not assessors and it's complicated, was $67.54. And both tiers together was $107.42.
Thank you.
And that average single-family tax home value is about $801,000.
Thank you. And my last question is, if you look at all those positions that would be potentially cut for either tier one and tier two, which ones do you think would be the hardest to refill in case we'd like to go back to the same level of services?
I think, you know, it's a great question. The Mandarin reduction is the one thing that is, has sort of complex programmatic entanglement. And once that goes, it gets hard to come back. I'd say that would be the top of the list. I'd say the second thing is actually the, the curriculum position, it's in tier two, I believe. It's the science and social studies position. And honestly, that's, that's a sort of slow erosion piece. It's, it's a harder thing to get people to understand and support in the public, but it is the sort of thing that differentiates, you know, a decent district from a very good one. And frankly, I'd like a very good one. So that's where I am.
Thank you.
Steve?
Just so that I understand correctly, let's say at town meeting, the tier one number is, is voted in.
No, you've got to start from what do we do? Okay? That number
Oh, okay.
is what we present. That's what the town will see. Action up or down about our number. What we vote as a committee is what happens at town meeting.
Okay.
So don't start that way.
Okay. Yeah. No, thank you. Yeah, no, I have no comments at this point, Dan.
Okay. I would like to point out to everybody here, as well as to the town, that there is one level of non-conservative approach to this budget cut. And I'll point that out as the 150K W E C C offset. What that requires us to do is to increase our revenue by changing the density of kids in that building. And it would be counting our chickens before it hatches. And that's a very dangerous thing to do, because if we didn't earn that money, then there's a much bigger impact for either of these two tiers. And so my feeling is to offer, first of all, I would, I would support tier one, because I think we've been asked by the town to do so and do the best we can, and then to do what we can in the future to improve our position going forward. But I would also reduce the amount of reduction to the difference between the 548 and 150, which then becomes 398 as a reduction against the total. And the reason, as I said, is because it's counting our chickens before it hatches. If we don't get that increased revenue, we have no other place to go, except to reduce additionally the comments that were made to support tier one and tier two. And so that would be what I would support in, as an effort to work with the town in reducing the budget. So that would be my motion when we get done with discussion.
Sarah?
I mean, I think it's unfortunate to have to make any cuts. So, you know, none of this, I think that you've made, you've been very thorough in trying to work with the leadership team to identify what is going to be possible. I'm disappointed about the loss of Mandarin. I think that's going to be, or the potential loss of Mandarin. I think that's a big one that we will probably have to revisit very, very short, very quickly, I think. So I think those are my only comments. Otherwise, you know, I understand everything. So
Tim?
Just two questions, both relating to tier two. So the first one, I know you talked about the increased class size for So the first one, I know you talked about the increased class size for the health class. I, I believe that you said it would be extremely large potentially. Do you have any idea of the rough estimate of what that class size would be?
I don't yet. I do know that the, so my only proxy for it right now, because they haven't built out the schedule, is that the PE classes that are the very large classes right now that we're kind of going to shift away from, we do have several that are in the 28 and up range. And, you know, in physical education, that starts to feel really a little spooky. We don't, we don't really want that many people in a phys ed class. So by shifting, my assumption is, right now, operating assumption is building the schedule and shifting those sections over, we would just see sort of those types of class sizes in, in the health class. I can't say that for certain, though. So I think we have to wait till it's built. But you, you, you can't get something for nothing, so it's going to be somewhere in that department that it crops up.
Sure. And then the only other question I had was relating to the custodian staffing that you were talking about.
Yes.
And them falling off. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. If we did do this, would there not be an opportunity to increase the mass staffing for the custodians until the budget cycle next year? Is that correct?
So essentially, we'd be putting on the books a halftime or a half-position cut with the understanding we have a full-time person for half of the year and then that person leaves for the second half of the year and we don't backfill the position, which still leaves us with a 0.5 cut in terms of our overall FTE moving forward. So we would either have to absorb that 0.5 into FY '27 or make an adjustment one way or the other. You know, we may see that we can live with a 1.0 reduction because essentially that's what we'll be experimenting with that second half of the year. Or we may see it's not working at all. Or we may see we think we can do a 0.5. So it, it's actually an interesting way to try and, and realize some savings without assuming quite as much risk. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready for a motion? Okay, I would move. What's the second? That we, we in effect honor the tier two reductions but not include additional earnings. And so the reduction would be $398,000 and the math be used to reduce our total budget that we present at town meeting there, too. Is there a second?
Just for clarification, sorry, did you say tier two or tier one?
Excuse me, tier one. I've done that all the time. Tier one.
Sure. And I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and I guess I would just add that I'm sure that people recognize that the school committee has no interest in doing this other than cooperating with the town because we do believe that this is a reduction in service. It means that the kids aren't going to get as much as they used to in terms of the overall program and that in the final analysis, it might be very short-sighted. But to cooperate, the committee has considered all of this. Allison and, and Anita have done an awful lot of work to come up with this answer in a very short period of time. And here we are. So if there's, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saddened to, to say that this will be one of my last votes and that, you know, the, to have to vote, to lower a, a school budget on the recommendation or the, the request of the advisory finance committee and the select board, just, it's, it's a real disappointment.
I might add that certainly others who feel the reduction in services could argue a higher number at town meeting, which historically is what we have done by presenting the school committee's budget, which historically has been the highest of any discussion at town meeting. So with that, I guess it's time for a vote. All those in favor of supporting my motion and the reduction in the budget? Unfortunately, it's 5-0-0. Thank you all. We have one piece of business left and that's the approval of minutes of February the 5th. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of February 5th?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Being done, all those in favor? Aye. 5-0-0. Thank you all. That's it for us. Thanks for coming and we'll see how it goes at town meeting. Yes, we need a, a motion and a vote to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.